Here to have a quorum, so we'll call this meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Badrich Lankella.
Here.
This is our, the end of Santana.
Here.
Barbara Harrington McKinney. Charlie McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McHale.
Here.
Eric Paulson.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Nikki Vander Mullen. Randy Udel.
Here.
Thomas Wilson.
Here. Thank you. Well, you have a quorum, so we are in order. Um, approval of minutes from our December, I'm sorry. Would our tech facilitator please proceed with our virtual meetings opening statement?
Sure. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you could lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked, or when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best on the call, committee members, in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Member, members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email list in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, approval of minutes from our December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those, if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? I see Badries are a second. Second, Randy, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Those know. Chair, please unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, but we're going to be unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda? I think so. Okay, thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none, we'll jump right into it then. Uh, Legisar seven, four, six, eight, two, adopting the Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Gregor. Uh, I'm here with my colleague Kirsty Latch. Uh, we're both planning, uh, staff. Uh, we made a presentation to this body, uh, back in October as an informational, uh, presentation on the Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan. And hopefully you're seeing, uh, graphic, uh, showing the boundary.
That's good, Jeff.
Okay, great. Of the Shadywood, uh, proposed Shadywood NDP area. So we're looking at the area south of Midtown Road, west of Woods Road, uh, and generally, um, east of Shady Oak Lane. Uh, there are some town residents there that are out of the study area. Uh, it's approximately four hundred and thirty-five acres of land. Um, back in two thousand and nine, uh, another planning process was, uh, attempted for the Shadywood Neighborhood. Uh, and that resulted in, uh, bringing in about forty acres of land, but the rest of this was left, uh, draft and, and never adopted. So we're picking that back up and trying to get the remainder of the area adopted. Um, the Ice Age Trail is planned to run through this area. Uh, and it's in both, uh, Madison Metropolitan School District and Verona Area School District. Uh, the draft plan addresses land use and housing, transportation, uh, street layout, pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The Ice Age Trail Corridor and, and parks, stormwater management, uh, and public services and utilities as well as sustainability. Uh, mentioned the Ice Age Trail a number of times. Back in nineteen eighty, uh, it was authorized as National Scenic Trail by Congress. That's kind of this, uh, lighter green area. Um, it's, it once implemented fully, it'll be about eleven hundred mile long trail. Follows the furthest, farthest extent of, uh, the most recent glacial advance. Uh, and it's one of eight national scenic trails within the United States. In nineteen eighty-seven, uh, the DNR adopted, uh, the corridor. And in nineteen ninety, uh, Dane County also adopted this corridor. Uh, there have been a number of properties, uh, preserved already for the open space corridor. City of Madison owns this forty acres Rainwoods Park. Uh, just recently, in the past year, Dane County, City of Verona, and City of Madison purchased the forty acres to the south. Uh, the Bitzer family has generously donated, uh, this property, uh, to the City of Madison for Ice Age Trail Corridor. And then the Ice Age Trail Alliance owns this piece of property, um, just south of Midtown Road. Uh, this is our draft, uh, land use recommendations, um, along with preserving a fairly sizable area for the Ice Age Trail Corridor, open space. Um, we're also, uh, preserving a fair amount of area for stormwater purposes. And then the remainder is being split, um, into kind of the east and west areas of housing. And the housing types range from Housing Mix One, uh, density of six to twelve dwelling units per acre, up to Housing Mix Three, which is the darker orange of twenty to forty DU per acre. And kind of the middle, uh, color here is Housing Mix Two, uh, twelve to twenty dwelling units per acre. Uh, also showing a proposed internal, uh, path, uh, to get you kind of through the neighborhood and connect into the Ice Age Trail Corridor. So that's the purple lines that you see there. Um, and then the dark green dash line is an approximation of where the Ice Age Trail Corridor, uh, will be running through this area, uh, as well as a conceptual, uh, Ice Age Trail Trailhead. Uh, both the location of the trailhead and the actual Ice Age Trail Corridor will be determined, uh, at the time, uh, it's built. Uh, as far as the draft transportation recommendations, uh, we're dealing with two roadways, uh, adjacent to the planning area, Midtown Road, uh, along the northern side and Woods Road along the eastern side. Both of those are, uh, proposed to be collectors, um, Midtown Road, west of Woods Road, and then Woods Road down to County PD. Uh, and, uh, in advance of the Complete and Green Streets Plan being adopted soon, um, we're calling out in the plan that these two roads would be considered community connectors, uh, within that complete green streets, uh, matrix of, uh, different road types. Uh, as far as pedestrian and bicycle facilities, uh, Midtown Road currently has on-street, uh, bike facilities up to, uh, approximately here Hidden Hill Drive. Um, and the plan is proposing to continue those, uh, to Meadow Road. This is kind of the salmon light color here. Um, once you get west of Meadow Road, the northern side of Midtown Road is Town of Middleton. Um, we are, the plan is also proposing, uh, a shared use path along the southern side of Midtown Road, uh, essentially out to the extents of the planning area. And that's to, uh, facilitate bicycle and pedestrian movements from the proposed neighborhoods, um, on the south side of Midtown Road. Um, and then sidewalks, uh, are currently, uh, on the north side of Hidden Hill. Or I'm sorry, north side of Midtown Road up to Hidden Hill, uh, Drive, and those are proposed to go to this north-south greenway path. The majority of the land, uh, north of Midtown Road in this area is planned for stormwater. Um, there is a little bit of, uh, Housing Mix One development proposed, proposed in the Midtown, uh, NDP, but not a whole lot, uh, out in the north of Midtown Road. Uh, and then, uh, uh, ped bike, uh, shared use path along the west side of Woods Road. Again, we're only showing it along the west side as there is no development, um, on the east side for, for the most extent, uh, due to the golf course. Um, and then, uh, that shared use path that was, uh, shown in the, the land use plan earlier. And then, uh, one of the recommendations that the TPB, uh, had for us when we gave that informational presentation in October was to show, uh, shared use path along, uh, the future MMSD interceptor route, which we did include that now, or we are including that now in the plan. Just to let you know, we've had an initial conversation with MMSD about that. Uh, they are open to a pathway. However, um, once you kind of get into this western area that goes through the ravine, uh, they did indicate that that might be very difficult, uh, to continue a path through there due to slopes. Um, they're talking about two to one slopes in that ravine. So it may be, um, difficult to accomplish a path through there. However, they did indicate that they are also looking at other potential routes, uh, in this general vicinity that may be more, uh, amenable to a pathway. We have also heard, uh, concerns from Town of Verona folks who live there about having a pathway, uh, through there. Um, so, uh, we'll continue to work with MMSD. We'll work with Town of Verona to see, uh, if we can make this pathway come to fruition, um, through that MMSD project. Uh, just to let you know, the timing on that MMSD project, it's going to be done in two phases. Uh, the southern phase, uh, they're looking at, I believe, two thousand and twenty-three. And the northern phase, which would be from Shady Oak Lane up to Midtown, uh, would be potentially two thousand and twenty-four or two thousand and twenty-five. It depends upon, uh, what they find as far as doing kind of their initial investigation of, of routing. So, um, other than that, that's about it for, um, pedestrian bicycle facilities. Um, just have a slide here on transit. There is currently Route fifty-five that comes down Midtown Road and south along Woods Road and then, uh, goes towards Epic. That is planned to continue, uh, when the new route structure, uh, is implemented, um, mid-year, uh, in twenty-three. Um, and that's all I've, I have for you. Uh, happy to answer any questions you might have. Uh, I'll just leave it on that slide for now.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Um, questions? Um, all right, not seeing, oh, Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah, this may be, uh, later for discussion, but there was a, a comment, uh, that came in, uh, via email asking about some, uh, some, some language on trees, I think, on, um, Midtown, maybe not on Midtown. Um,
Probably Shadywood, or I'm sorry, probably on Woods Road. There's
Could be.
Fair amount of trees.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you had a chance to see that, uh, comment or not.
I haven't, uh, we have had comments like that come up during the planning process. And the intent is to keep that pathway in the existing right of way. We, we feel like we can do any upgrades to Woods Road as well as put a, a shared use path within that right of way. Uh, it, it may impact some trees, uh, if they're within the right of way, but, um, I think the goal would be to, to avoid, you know, taking down trees as, as much as possible, preserving as many as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Any comments or discussion? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Is there a second? Alder Furman, thank you. Um, discussion, Alder Foster, did you want to speak? Your motion? Okay. Alder Paulson, I see your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find that language just to see if I want to offer motion to try to include it. Uh, I apologize. Give me just a second.
Nope. Yeah, take your time. See if I can find it to. Looks like it came in at eight ten AM, at least to me.
I just got a couple of things from Sharon today, so it's on, it's on that. I just got to find it here.
While you're looking, I guess, just a question for staff. Is there anything in, in the text right now, or would it be easy to add something in the text to just recommend that a path would, would be, would follow whatever the final kind of MMSD intercept alignment is? I mean, that's, that's what I understood from you, Jeff, and that seems to make sense. So, I mean, would that alleviate the concern or?
I think, um, I think there's, there's two concerns. Uh, so there's this Woods Road one, and then the concerns with the path along the interceptor. Our folks, you know, don't necessarily want a path running through their side yard or their backyard. They're concerned about, you know, will they be able to sell their house with a path?
Privacy.
Yeah. Um, so it, yeah, well, I mean, without knowing the actual route it's going to go. I mean, one of the options they threw out was potentially following one of the roads that has a cul-de-sac and then coming off that cul-de-sac so that would limit the side yard type, um, uh, impact. So it's really hard to say, you know, what we could put in the text to alleviate those concerns at this time, other than maybe soften the text to say we're um, studying the route for the best location or something like that.
Alder Paulson, is this, are you seeing on my screen what?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I was doing three things this morning. I don't know why I thought it said something about trees, but, um, but yeah, so it was, it was more on the path here. So, um, okay, I mean, if we, if we, um, aren't really able to find new verbiage for the path, I guess, I'm okay moving forward.
Okay. Well, that's just like, I'm juggling screens here. Okay, Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Uh, just curious if, I mean, if the intent was to add the, it looks like that email was about the not having a text call out for the recommendation of a shared use path on Woods Road, where there is a text call out for that along Midtown, although it does show it on the, the map. So I don't know, Jeff, would it be easy to add somewhere in the text that it's recommended that there's a shared use path? I mean, it seems like it may be covered by the math, but maybe is that Alder Paulson with that? May I ask what you're looking for?
Yeah, it just, uh, struck me as like, oh, it's a reasonable, uh, thing to include.
We can include that.
Right.
All right, go ahead. Oh. Okay, so some hands up and down. All right, um, so that's in. Any more comments, questions, or discussion? All right, um, on the motion to adopt the Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan as a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan with the addition of that, uh, path recommendation that Alder Foster and Alder Paulson were talking about. All those in favor of recommending adoption, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Those know. Chair, please unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote or an abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it will be unanimous. Thank you. Our next item is Legisar seven, four, nine, two, six, uh, resolution approving a Complete Green Streets policy to incorporate Complete Green Streets principles of street design for all modes of transportation into public way improvements and project phases.
Now, I'll give a, a, a brief introduction. Um, you've seen this many, many times or less. I'm going to say maybe eighteen months. Um, most of our design guidance is based on a classification system proposed in nineteen thirty-eight that was designed to move cars. And so we have arterios, collectors, and, and local roads, and this kind of changes that paradigm, you know, instead of looking to the green book and see where does our road fit in that green book, we're able to, um, look to our guide and say, how do we move people in addition to moving cars? You know, and looking at all things. And our Renee, I think, has just, um, been tenacious along with her, um, our, uh, consultant tool group to provide something that's, it's not perfect. This is not the perfect guide. Over the next three or four years through revisions, it'll be perfect. Um, but it's darn good, and it would change the paradigm on how we do, uh, street design. So, uh, Renee, why don't you go ahead and start?
All right. Thank you. I will just get this going. I'm going to be quick because a lot of this you've seen before. Uh, I'll just say I'm Renee Callaway, Ped Bike Administrator. Been here a few times. I've been managing this project on behalf of our kind of interdepartmental staff team, um, and won't go over this too much, but as you know, streets have changed, even though, you know, we might be considered a city that adopted kind of the idea of complete streets a long time. Still, policies and ordinances have, have gone from these narrower streets to these wider ones. Um, you know, a lot of them have lower parking utilization. Houses have, um, a lot more off-street parking, many of them, um, particularly ones that were built kind of in a certain era. And a lot of times residents are contacting us, um, for new street improvements, not too long after a street is built, ones that are, have good pavement, aren't that old. I mean, many of you were part of our Safe Streets Madison, uh, program where we really looked at our programs and, and thought about what we want to be prioritizing. And really, that list is up over four hundred now, and many of them are neighborhood streets that, um, we could have built right the first time. So really, you know, you've heard this a million times, really kind of people-centered street, right sizing them. And then this idea that green infrastructure trees really need to be incorporated into the process, um, and not be kind of something that's done separately from other, uh, parts of the street designing. So really, um, Complete and Green Streets, as you know, um, they're for everyone regardless of who they are, how they travel. There isn't, um, just one design. Streets will still take into consideration context and differing priorities to come up with that final design. But they will be, uh, built to be safe, um, and to be accessible by people, no matter how they would like to get around. Um, and that will build streets that help, um, with kind of resiliency, climate change, things like that. Um, you guys know more than the other committees, the timeline. We've come here many times, um, since we started this project two years ago to talk through all of these different details, um, and get to where we are today. Um, engagement, um, you guys have heard about three phases. Just to kind of review, you know, we kind of did your, a lot of your typical things that we've been doing post, you know, since the pandemic with um, virtual open houses, a virtual webinar, online surveys, online videos that people could watch. Um, kind of things that are pretty typical, um, for public engagement across the city departments. However, um, we did, uh, we put our extra effort into focus groups to ensure that we heard from people of color and low-income residents who we were seeing and we find across the city are less likely to participate in these more typical, um, outreach efforts. And then we worked with a firm that you've seen here, Equity by Design, who has really good contacts, um, focuses in on this kind of work and was able to provide really good input. Um, and so what we're gonna, the guide really centers the community values that we heard. It offers a much more clear direction on priorities. It has a really strong starting point for the designs. It's really explicit about equity, um, and additional sort of process that we would do to ensure equitable outcomes. Um, and as Tom mentioned, this is a flexible tool. Um, you'll see in the resolution, if you've had a chance to look at it, that there are built in ways that we will be updating this. There are many things that we still want to do. There are many things that can definitely be added. We've heard about some of those from the community. Um, and as we've gone through the process, um, and so we'll be reviewing that with committees to ensure that this is staying up to date and things that still need to happen, um, get taken care of. So just a quick overview, this is going to be super quick, but I wanted to, um, talk mostly about the modal hierarchy. I know, um, Harold from, from the Transportation Commission, uh, you'll see this in the Legisar, you know, just kind of worried about putting in parking. Um, we had had it as kind of below uh, sort of moving motor vehicles. And then after some discussion here, we moved it up equal because it didn't feel right that way. Um, is that right? I think the one thing, you know, the flex zone, uh, as you've seen at previous meetings is like where parking is and the travel way is where moving vehicles are. But there is some overlap, particularly if we continue, um, to have some peak hour lanes, uh, going forward where it is kind of crossing over the two. So that's where it kind of landed through this process, um, after that discussion about the modal hierarchy here. Um, so you know, that's just something to think about. Um, so here is kind of the whole process with this idea that our community values and that modal hierarchy on the left, um, infuses the whole process and that design that you see at the end seems to be reflecting those things. Um, I'm going to just walk through these pretty quickly because you've seen them, starting with the street type. We have these eleven street types that consider the context of the street, not just, um, what is its role in moving motor vehicles, but what is that street like? Or more importantly, what do we aspire to that street to be like? So these are aspirational. Over time, we will have examples of these that we have done ourselves that we feel are good are really showcasing these eleven type. Um, and this is where the street design starts. Um, each of these street types is broken up into these three street zones that you've seen before with the travel way being, uh, more movement oriented with transit service, uh, biking as well as motor vehicle travel. Um, the flex zone being more of that stationary use, um, everything from trees and green infrastructure, cafes, shut bus shelters and parking are kind of happening in that zone. And then you have the walkway, which incorporates where people are walking. Obviously, it could also be where there is a shared use path. And then bikes would move into that zone. Each of these eleven street types has a graphic that shows, um, those relative priorities. There are graphics, some graph, some of them have two, like ones that emphasize transit more. They are pretty simple graphics. I know, um, it was also mentioned that they don't really show a lot of treatments that you might do at intersections, but we did go with a fairly um, sort of cost-effective graphics, since that is an area where you couldn't really, um, spend a lot of money. So these are pretty simple, but they kind of try to get at how those zones are broken up. Um, and then each of them has kind of more of an explanation about kind of that context and a little bit more about those zones. The zones aren't as simple as high, medium, and low. Sometimes there are competing priorities, um, within this that have to be considered. Um, and then there is this initial street type map, um, and this will obviously be evolving over time. And tonight, you kind of got a little bit of a preview of that. We've been working with the planning department on this project and this idea that future sub-area plans will be recommending, um, from those eleven street types. So, um, with the ones that were in process, as you could see, Jeff kind of said, like, we talked it out that that was going to be in there, even though it's not approved yet, just to kind of help set the, the stage for this to be coming. Um, next are these overlays, and these are also really important in setting priorities, um, for this project. Um, for any project, there are six of them. Um, some of them are more process-oriented and some of them are, are more traditional maps. Some of them are decision-making. But these are six things that have a big impact on those priorities, um, once you have your street type. Um, the equity priority areas where we're starting currently with the neighborhood resource teams, but anticipate that this is a map that we would be looking to update as kind of a city civil rights and data team project takes a look at those resource team areas and this might expand it. But this is where we want to make sure that we're, uh, we have a really strong process. Um, and we're really documenting it to ensure that we're having the same outcomes across all of our neighborhoods. The idea with this guide is that you don't have to know to ask about trees. You don't have to know to ask about speed management, that this is all built into the process. So if you are in an equity priority area, you can anticipate having the same high quality street project as a neighborhood that's maybe more in tune with transportation related, um, or a green infrastructure related project. Um, and so you can see here, we would take some additional engagement steps. Um, we would ensure that we know what the, the neighborhood has told us before. There will be a checklist where we fill out some additional questions. And then we'll also be looking for areas of opportunity to collaborate with other projects that are going on. Um, and that we're also documenting and letting other departments know when we hear about concerns that can't be solved through a street project, but are important and should not be lost. Um, and that that neighborhood input is coming around full circle to where, um, people can, uh, take action on it. Then there's the transit priority network, um, and those streets. Um, I, in red are the ones with fifteen minutes, uh, weekday midday service. Where we will be ensuring, um, the best possible sort of transit amenities, be that transit lanes. Signal things that need to happen. Um, obviously across the whole system, we want to ensure that it, they're, the stops are safe and accessible. Um, but these are the ones where we're really, when a trade off needs to be made, it's not going to be things that are impacting transit service negatively. Then we have the all ages and ability bike network, and the idea is that we really need to kind of take our network to that next level. As we've talked about here previously, and the idea is that we would have this all ages and abilities bike network. Um, these are the critical links to ensure that we have a citywide complete network. So that you can get anywhere in the city to those sort of vital destinations, to neighborhoods. Um, and that you don't have to be a super cyclist, that you can just be anyone who gets on a bike and be able to do that. Um, as you can see, we're starting with just this interim map. It's, it definitely one of those areas that is far from perfect. It's based on work that was done in twenty fifteen and we realized that is quite a while ago. It was done with kind of a different perspective, a different thinking. Um, but we feel like this is something that we can work on next year. Um, and we can take that time. I felt like it was better to have an interim app and put in the effort and the time that's needed to actually make this as valuable as it needs to be. Um, and you can see in the resolution that then that map would go through the Transportation Commission. They would be, um, the responsible uh, group for ensuring that that gets done and that they would be approving it and make sure that it meets the city's needs. Um, another thing that we talked about quite extensively at the Transportation Commission is kind of a new thing here for this committee. Um, is on page twenty-five, um, we inserted on the left, that kind of orangish red graph. Um, that kind of says, this is the line in the sand for our, um, cutoffs for, you know, when we're considering that all ages and ability bike network. It has a slightly different threshold than, um, the middle one in blue, which is in the federal highways guide. The orangish red one is the original kind of proposal by Tool Design Group who worked, um, with federal highways on a project. Um, it's much more blurred. It's not specific enough for our needs. Um, versus on the right, um, you're probably all pretty familiar. I've seen it a few times, the sort of NACTO, um, guidance for selecting in all ages and abilities bikeways. It is got the slit tighter thresholds, particularly, um, in the shared lane bike boulevard where they're saying at twenty-five miles per hour, the cutoff is fifteen hundred and at twenty, it's two thousand. But we have streets like Jennifer Mifflin, where some parts wouldn't be below, some parts would be above. And we wanted something that provided a little bit more flexibility in that decision making. We've seen that with other cities, um. For example, Cambridge, Massachusetts, they have some things in their guides that offers a little bit additional flexibility at the edges over the NACTO guide. Um, plus NACTO is, um, working on updating their, their bike guide, um, next year. At the NACTO conference, we actually had a session where people could kind of talk about some of those issues with it. Um, so I'm interested to see what they come back with, but right now it felt like that additional flexibility in the orange and red fit with the work that we have been doing here in the city and the projects we've been approving recently. Um, but there were concerns because it's simple. It doesn't take well, mo- lanes into consideration or context. Um, so I put in red something, there was a TC recommendation to add additional footnote. Um, I just added that we would give additional consideration to the overall roadway context and number of motor vehicle lanes, um, as outlined in the NACTO urban bikeway design guide when selecting an appropriate bike facility, but that's definitely something we need to talk about tonight. Um, Chris and some other TC members are here, so hopefully they can see if that kind of fits with what they were thinking or not. Then I won't talk too much about tree canopy priority, but I know it is something that you'll see a lot of comments about. And I think the idea is actually that this would up the priority given to trees, um, and that they would have more emphasis in those areas where they're most needed. Um, there is a goal from the Urban Forestry Task Force Report to get to a forty percent tree canopy overall in the city. But it also says that there needs to be a process for looking, um, at more of the neighborhood level. And our idea is that that's what this will do. It, um, has a, a chart for people to ensure that they're looking at with three projects to kind of see what is happening at the neighborhood level so that that flex zone can be prioritized for tree canopy. Especially in those situations where there is a very low level right now. Um, it doesn't mean that it wouldn't also help the tree canopy in neighborhoods that already have a good one. But we really don't want to trade off space in the terrace in that flex zone for trees when we know that it is so important. There is also a way to help get at appropriate and viable locations for distributed green infrastructure. Um, there are places where they work and places where they don't work as well, and we want to ensure that we're prioritizing it if we are working in a space where this can really make a difference. So there is a flow chart. Um, for considering that, there are some other charts then when you find that this that you're working in an area where it would be viable to help you decide what type of green infrastructure makes sense in that type, that one of those eleven street types. There's also information on permeable pavement, something that the city has been piloting and how to make sure that you're considering that, um, for a potential project as well. And then we have our sixth overlay, which is more of a process step. We know that we have streets that are on the national highway system. We know we have truck routes. And we know that we need to collaborate on those, um, with other entities to make changes. And so this is a reminder to start that process, to start those conversations. And to work on these streets to ensure that we're getting good designs, even if we have to collaborate with others, um, on those projects. All right. Um, and then we get to the street allocation chart that are in the guide that you will also see. Um, and once you have your design priorities, you would go to those charts to kind of help you figure out how much space those priorities, um, and those street design elements from those street types are going to take. Um, we have a number of charts, uh, that kind of lay out kind of different kinds of width, target speeds, uh, lane width. We have ones for each of the zones that talks about minimums and preferreds, and those preferreds all kind of add up to be your typical right of ways. And those typical, like the flex zone, that's accounting for what you need to have space to do green infrastructure and to prioritize trees in the travel way. It's saying there's enough space if this is going to be a transit facility. It incants for what you need to do on all ages and ability bike facility. Um, so those are all accounted for in those charts. And this is an area where as we really get into it, this is a chart that I can definitely see being updated over time. And then there's some design guidance and this came, um, from Alder Foster's suggestion at the Board of Public Works to have some additional guidance to ensure that we are doing a lot of, um, that speed management from the get go, that we're considering what the street type is and what might work on those streets. Um, so that is in here as well, and I can imagine that we might add to this in the future as well. Um, and so then, as you got through your charts and you saw your space, if you need to make trade offs, you would go back to those priorities and you would see what they are. And ensure that you're not, say, trading off tree space, or you're not trading off that all ages and ability bike facility at that highest level. Um, to get to, and it says design, but I think, you know, in talking through a few projects, it could be designs. There could be more than one that really meets those categories. And then those would be the ones that we would move forward with discussions on. So there will be an implementation checklist. Once this is approved, um, you know, it'll be kind of a slow rollout because we're obviously kind of at a weird time of year where we're already in approval for projects, um, but we would start to roll this out. Um, and it would be this record of what's happening. It would be used by committees in, in looking at, um, what's working, what's not working, what might we want to change in the guide? It will definitely help us with looking at equitable outcomes. So I think there'll be a lot of good information that we're collecting through this process that will help us going forward. And then the resolution has some really particular responsibilities. Um, the Transportation Commission, um, they would, um, they review street construction, reconstruction type projects. They would, um, need to approve projects that vary from the guide. They would also have that ability to modify the guide, um, to, and just to address things that we didn't think of, things that we need to change over time to sort of remain current, um, with design practices. Then they would approve updates to the transit net priority network as well as that all ages and ability bike network. Then the Board of Public Works would have the ability to approve updates to things related to tree canopy, green infrastructure, things kind of more in that nature. Um, as mentioned, sub area plans are going to be recommending street types based on the guide. Um, and things that vary would need to come here to the Transportation Planning and Policy Board, um, to be approved. Then, um, we have two ordinances, in particular, thirty-three is the one that has, uh, outlines boards, committees and commission responsibilities. So that would need to be updated after approval as well as section sixteen has kind of what people call the subdivision ordinance. And once this is approved, we would need to work with, um, planning and the attorney's office, others to ensure that they're aligned with each other. Um, and then there was a addition at the Board of Public Works and Transportation Commission, um, for a return to the committees to provide a report, um, after a full implementation year. All right, I will stop sharing. But I can bring anything back up, uh, at a later date.
Thank you, Renee. Uh, questions? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Renee. Um, you've mentioned a, a number of the recommendations that were made by Transportation Commission or Board of Public Works. Are there any that you didn't mention already, um, or from any other committee that reviewed it? And are there any of the recommendations that were made by any of those committees? Um, do staff have any concerns with incorporating them into the, um, final recommendation?
Sure. So planning commission did not make any. But then the Board of Public Works and then also the TC, um, wanted to just ensure that after that full sort of tip cycle, that there would be definitely a report back then, which anyway, wanted to do that. Um, so that certainly is not a problem at all to just add that in to make sure that it doesn't get forgotten. Um, and then, uh, I think the only other one, but Anne is here, um, was the additional footnote for page twenty-five to kind of clarify more the relationship, um, between kind of the NACTO guide and chart and the one that's in there. Um, that is kind of a variation of the federal highway one. Um, and I can share, here we go. So I don't know where did that go? Not there. There it is. Um, if this footnote kind of feels like what people were thinking of, um, or not, uh, but it is something that I just kind of wrote up between that meeting and our meeting in hopes of getting some feedback, but I think there's no problem to add, um, something that sort of helps get at the issues that were highlighted, um, around kind of the one chart being not as, not as detailed.
Great, thank you. Um, so it looks like there's a couple of members from TCs, so maybe if, if any of them wants to just share if that looks like it's hitting the mark, um, based on that conversation. And then I also had a question um, around on the modal hierarchy slide. Um, I mean, I, I mentioned a few times, I would, would have preferred to see the kind of bike and transit on the same level, but I'll leave that one, um, for now, but I am, um, I think a little bit concerned about the car parking sliding up onto the same level with the auto travel. Um, I was looking at Chicago's, I believe they don't include parking at all, um, on their modal hierarchy, which kind of makes sense to me because it's really not a mode of travel. I mean, it seems like it fits pretty squarely in that, um, flex zone. I, I guess the one, um, exception to that would be there like rush hour travel lane where it's both a travel way sometimes and a, and a, you know, car parking sometimes. But I guess there's any thoughts on, on that? And I, I mean, that's one thing I'd like to consider updating before we, we pass this. Um, any thoughts from staff on either not including parking at all on the modal hierarchy or moving it back down to be clearly below, um, the kind of travel modes?
I think we raised parking in line with uh, motor vehicles as a recommendation from the board, didn't we, Renee?
Uh, you're. Yeah, yeah, it did. So it came up here. I think it got included in the hierarchy because that there were a lot of comments about that. So um, it felt like that was something that it might be better to just visualize that it is not above other things. Um, and so it ended up in the modal hierarchy, even though it's not actual movement, um, like everything else. But then after discussion here, it felt kind of awkward having it kind of hanging out on the bottom. And then there was some discussion, should we add other things like street cafes or green trees or something also? Um, and then that sort of went, it felt like that went too far. So it kind of just ended up with the motor vehicles to say they would kind of be all being considered at that same level, whether they were moving or not, but definitely open if people are feeling kind of differently now that they've sat with that a while. I don't think it can't be changed. Obviously, it could be.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I guess I'm, I, if any, anybody else has thoughts on that one, I guess I feel a little, it, it feels odd to me and I you know, my way of thinking is we're, we're thinking of what the kind of travel way needs are both for buses, walking, biking, cars. And then if they're, you know, that sort of rush hour travel lane scenario aside, eh, then whatever space is left theoretically could be, you know, for sort of flex way or terror, you know, figuring out between kind of greenway stuff, car parking, bike parking, you know, whatever that may be. It feels like it fits well. And like, that's kind of how I understand the whole guide, I guess. So it does feel a little bit strange to me to pull one of the flex space uses out and kind of elevate it onto the, um, modal hierarchy, um, especially like ahead of thinking about the kind of curb, curb management policy that might get developed in the next couple of years where like even card, you know, long-term parking versus short-term parking or, uh, loading, unloading, or these sorts of things, even within that category, it feels like we're we're, it's still kind of getting a kind of higher position that's then sort of makes sense for the guide. So, yeah, I'll, I'll guess it's just curious for other people's thoughts, but maybe we can, um, make a motion to include a change there. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. We, we actually did have one registered, which of course is, uh, Anne Kovach from the TC. She's here. Um, got her hand up, so, um, we'll just let her speak, uh, as a, as a participant, normal participant, uh, without objection. Uh, go ahead, Anne.
Thanks. Alder Foster asked, um, for our thoughts as to how this, uh, footnote reflects the conversation at the Transportation Commission. And I think, uh, Renee, you did a really good. And I think, uh, Renee, you did a really good job of reflecting what we talked about because there were concerns about, um, you know, what you showed on the slide here. And this was something that, um, we asked specifically, I can tell you, the motion was um, to add clarity as to how the chart relates to the various guidelines. And I think, I think you did it. So from my point of view, and you know, Chris, um, you know, you could certainly add as well. Um, and Harold, I know you weren't at the meeting, but, um, I think that really does a good job. And and relative to parking, um, I'll just throw this out there if you don't mind me making this extra comment, um. From our, my point of view at Transportation Commission, we just need to make sure that it's very clear that it's below pedestrians, it's below biking, it's below transit. You know, because so often we have people saying, no, no, we want parking when we want to put in a protected bike lane. So from my point of view, it it just needs to be clear that parking is not the priority that that some people seem to think that it is. Um, and and how that's shown in the hierarchy, I can see, you know, there might be several ways of of doing that or even not including it in the hierarchy. So, um, if I can answer any other questions, um, from our conversation at TC, that was, uh, what I wanted to accomplish. So thanks.
Thank you, Anne. Alder Paulson, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I wanted to turn to the, the new diagram on some of the traffic calming measures or the new table. Uh, and I specifically wanted to talk a little bit about, um, uh, speed bumps and speed humps and, uh, raised intersections. And I had one very specific question about, uh, uh, speed humps not being, uh, compatible on transit routes. But I can think of places that that metro runs down right now that that, um, uh, that has speed bumps. Um, so I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity on that and get a little bit of more clarity on are we making a big distinction between speed humps and and raised croc, uh, crosswalks and and a little bit more clarity on the difference between a raised intersection and a raised crosswalk? Um, and so if we could just dig into to some of that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to stop sharing. I meant to hit unmute. I will reshare that. Okay, so, um, and I know, you know, Yang has been a big part and Tom have been a big part of the speed hump, but I can just tell you kind of the difference, a raised intersection. So if you've been on Monroe Street, um, you'll see that a number of those kind of go up, um, at the intersection. And so it's more, I guess, a table and a bus is more able to kind of get, uh, both wheels on that less drawing, less hard on the kind of overall bus maintenance. Um, but Monroe Street is one place where we have put in raised intersections, um. And then a raised crosswalk is something that's pretty new. Um, we have a few that went in this year on the near east side with some projects. Uh, we have some going in next year on Hammersley. But they, um, kind of bring that, there's, they're not the entire intersection, um, but that crosswalk. And in the cases there, it's where the Cap City path crosses at Russell, um, Ohio Street where it's kind of a flush crossing, I guess, um. There's not, you know, you don't go down and then back up when you're you're going across walking or biking. Um, these are very simplified kind of examples. And then a speed hump, you might see them on some neighborhood street there, um. But they are hard on a bus. Um, we definitely have some streets where they went in. Metro kind of gets by with them, but they are, um, far from preferred by by metro transit. Um, they find a raised crosswalk or a raised intersection to be, uh, just a little easier for that bus, um, to cross.
Yeah, I think it also, uh, affects kind of fire response. They have a a policy which other members of the TPBB would like us to dive into. I I'm gonna, uh, make an editorial comment too that, um, a speed hump affects the, the houses right by it. You you hear, you know, they hear that speed hump twenty four seven. And so it, while it does calm, it it's it, it'd be better if we could use geometric features to reduce speeds rather than a hump because a hump is kind of the least desirable from our emergency response, our bus. And then the the households that are immediately adjacent to the hump.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, once I run a quickly addies at the, uh, you know, all the different options actually provide a really good traffic coming effects. Uh, uh, you know, I I, you know, especially for, you know, gen- general traffic. Uh, uh, actually, you know, like, you know, raise the intersection, raise the crosswalks. Uh, you know, thus, uh, slow people down and it also, uh, really highlights, you know, some of the conflict points. Like, you know, where pedestrian cross, uh, and whereas the, uh, you know, interaction where other uh, users cross, even, uh, you know, motor vehicles. Uh, definitely has been very valuable tool. And, uh, uh, you know, uh, one or few of us, uh, were at, uh, uh, in the Boston area for the NACTO conference, uh, which I saw quite a bit of those being used, uh, in in Ca- in Cambridge. Uh, so I think, you know, we we can definitely use more here. Uh, for a risk cross, crosswalk, actually, I think, uh, our first one actually is in District Three. That's, uh, uh, in the, uh, as it right in front of the metro market. Um, I forgot the name of the neighborhood. Uh, I know that so so well. Uh, but you guys, you know what I'm talking about, you know, by cut more road, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, so we got a lot of good feedback on that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just add the nice ten what speed humps as they work. Um, especially, uh, District Three is a a big part where we, you know, it's it's a long stretch between Cottage Grove and Milwaukee Street. And then we have a lot of cross streets that, um, uh, you know, go for a mile and are mostly kind of straight away, um, and and they can turn into racetracks. Um, and speed humps, uh, on North Star, for example, definitely, definitely have slowed down traffic. And in fact, they've, but they've pushed traffic off to other streets that are parallel. Um, that now those streets, uh, kind of need speed humps to to encourage people to slow down on them instead of treating them as as racetrack. So, um, I don't know, I, speed humps work and they slow down, uh, on a lot of these longer streets. And I think we're going to have a lot of these longer streets and and I'm less convinced some of the other, uh, things work nearly as well. Uh, so, that's sort of what I'm well, why I'm excited to see that there's more maybes and there's more yeses, um, on 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 some of these, um, I still am looking for things that can help us to really, on these longer streets, um, uh, slow folks down. So those are a good start, um, and I'm really excited to see more raised crosswalks, um, uh, they they're right in front of the metro mark, uh, the new North Star segments have them, uh, and and I think those will be nice. I'm not convinced they slow traffic down nearly as much as the the more explicit speed humps though, so.
All right, thank you. Um, and then with no objection, we'll allow, um, all claims from TC to join the conversation as a participant. Go ahead, Harold.
Yeah, thanks for offering me the opportunity, um, to speak. I was not at the TC meeting because I was out sick. I had sent that email in that I think some of you have seen as well. And so I can comment on, I watched the TC discussion, but I was obviously not part of it. Um, Renee, if you would mind going back to that slide with the footnote, um, and, uh, chart.
Oh, wrong one, sorry. Yeah, one.
The other one with with red text. So I just wanted to provide context of like where I was coming from and what I now think of the solution. So when I saw the chart in the upper left corner and looked at the thresholds for and the granularity of what it is and compared it to what you see on the right, which is this table, which I get, that's maybe not as visually appealing. But I think for me, the main point is that the information contained there and the criteria of what type of facility you need in which context is different between the two. And I think the NACTO guide, for example, and one key difference area is that zone between twenty five and thirty miles an hour, which they call out separately, where in many cases, depending on volume, you're going to need protected bike lanes and not just painted bike lanes, as you can see in the FH, um, WA guidance. Um, Tom at the TC meeting pointed out with the bike boulevards that there's different thresholds there as well. I guess I have less strong feelings about that one, even though I would still say, I mean, if traffic volumes are too high for a bike boulevard, then we better think about what we can do to fix that. But I think really there are differences between the two guides, and I'm not totally sure if the footnote as written here really resolves if like, okay, NACTO says this, the chart says this, what do we do? I guess it doesn't really help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
I, I if I were to use, um, I I still prefer the, the flexibility. I I believe our staff are, are very creative. And, um, if we were to use, let's say, a Jennifer Street example, you know, um, um, use a Jennifer Street example. I ride on Jennifer Street and I still, I feel like the bike boulevard is a better solution than a psychopath, you know, in that context. And yet, if if we go with kind of the rigid numbers on the NACTO guide, we'd be with a psychopath. Um, but then if you'll also look at the Hammersley Road, uh, which I think TC approved, which I think is a very creative solution that that has a separated bike path on a on a road. So I feel like, um, I believe that engineering staff and TE staff will pursue the right um, solution for the right context, if you know what I mean. Um, and so I so rather than gravitating towards the right, which has very hard fast numbers, you know what I mean? I, I, I feel like it'd be nice to have, to give the, um, you know, the staff, some of the flexibility to to see what is the right solution. Because on Jennifer Street right now, you know, one third of it would be, for, you know, a psychopath or parking protected, which would, you know, tree impacts, two thirds of it wouldn't be. The traffic counts from two years ago, there'd be more psychopath, you know, it's, it's hard. I I do believe and I do trust our you know, our staff feel like they will pursue what the most protection that they can, they can get. And Renee, would you, is there anything that you would add?
I mean, I think the thing that I would add is the, you know, like other things within the guide. If it feels like in the end, like that footnote isn't enough and it's not working, that is something that the Transportation Commission will be reviewing and um, you know, maybe this new guide that, uh, NACTO is coming out with like becomes a better fit, or maybe that is working, um, and we stick with it. So I think you know, if we approve it this way now, there's, it it's not a massive risk because the Transportation Commission will be reviewing it to ensure that it is working as intended for all ages and abilities, um, bike facilities. And if it's not, it it definitely can be amended, um, either with changes to the orange graphic or it can be, uh, the NACTO chart that we see or a future one that's coming next year. So I think that 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 can be reviewed as well. That's my take, but it does offer that flexibility, um, to try to ensure that we are kind of working within the context fully, um, of what the different neighborhoods and streets are like in the city.
Thanks, Renee. Uh, Chris, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, I, here's what I'm hearing on this discussion. Um, I'm actually hearing Tom Lynch say that the, um, na- the the NACTO guide is too specific and wrong. And I'm hearing Harold say that the the diagram on the left is too specific and wrong. Um, and I think the intention of the footnote was to say that the 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 figure on the left is meant to be a rough representation of what all these guides are collectively saying. And since there are a bunch of manuals referenced in the back of the complete streets guides, um, the footnote should say that you know, this is, this figure is a rough representation of what is represented in the guides that we are adopting with this manual. Um, and that gives folks the the flexibility to use those guides, including the NACTO guide, um, or whatever might be the appropriate design standard in any given case. So I think as long as the footnote captures generally that, um, it it seems fine to me and I think we will be okay. Um, while I have the floor, I'll just make a comment on the hierarchy. Um, if if there were any change in the hierarchy made at this point, it would be to bring bikes and and buses in line with each other, um, which I think I maybe suggested sometime a while back and, but I didn't really want to die on that hill. So I don't really think it matters that much. Um, and I think to to Anne Kovac's point, I think having parking in with the, um, the the motorized traffic will probably still have the desired outcome when it comes to design decisions mostly. Um, and I, so I guess all I'm saying is I didn't really want to nitpick on any of these. Um, so that's kind of where I stand on them.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Tom. Um, I guess just on this question of like, oh, what to set as the base in regards to bike facilities? So I, I mean, I hear, I hear Tom Lynch describe like wanting to maintain staff flexibility. Um, I mean, the way I'm understanding this is staff would need to get TC approval for something that doesn't meet what otherwise is sort of expected in here, which seems good and appropriate. And wouldn't, like, when I think of the Jennifer Street, which I, you know, went to those public meetings, I went through all the thing, it's obviously a very unique context, et cetera, et cetera. I guess I imagine with this being adopted that if the, if it made sense to recommend a, uh, bike boulevard for Jennifer Street instead of separated bike facilities, I feel like staff still would have made that recommendation. I feel like Transportation Commission would have, if they agreed, would have, you know, gone along with that, and that still would have likely gotten built the same way it was. On the flip side, if we kind of make it, if we make the general rule, the sort of lower standard, it feels like it's actually going to be less likely and harder for staff to push for something that's above and beyond what's shown as sort of the expectation. And then I can imagine hearing from the neighbors, oh, well, according to this chart, it says you only need on-street bike lanes. And so staff's recommending protected bike lanes, which is going to remove more parking. And so this doesn't actually, it's not consistent with the plan. So I'm just, and I'm trying to play these scenarios out, and I guess I'm not quite understanding why we wouldn't want the the more, whatever's closest to what we actually want, which I think is the bike facility that's going to work for the most people, that's going to be that all ages and abilities facility. So I guess, I don't know, Tom Lynch, like, could you speak to that? Or, I mean, and maybe, maybe this language covers it. I don't know. I just, I worry when we put something in that's less than what we're actually wanting. I've seen that, I've seen it be really difficult to then push for something better than that, once we, once we say this is what we're expecting.
I, um, I do, I do think that as a staff, we generally agree, Jim Wolf, and that some of the thresholds in NACTO are lower than we can attain. But we do think we can have very good, very good facilities with, um, um, some thresholds that are just slightly higher than what NACTO has. Um, and I think that's generally between Jim Wolf, Renee, and a- across the board. Um, and so when we, when you go directly to the NACTO guide, it it, um, we just didn't agree with all the, their cutoffs, you know what I mean? Um, and so, um, if if, you know, we would actually, Renee, you probably
Yeah, so I
Help, help me, save me.
So I think this is definitely a tricky issue, and I think and I have heard this on our projects that we've worked on internally, but I also heard this from other people who, you know, follow the NACTO guide or NACTO cities. And I think that's one of the reasons NACTO is looking at an update is that it's not quite right and that a lot of people are and that a lot of people are putting in their guides something that varies a little bit from it. Because when they design something and they try to follow their various policies and guides, that it is just a little too limiting and ends up that you're in this starting point where you're making people mad from the get-go, even though maybe you're going to ask for an exception or a variance. Whereas the Federal Highway Guide in the middle, which is blue, is just too squishy and not defined enough. They just like blur out the edges because they don't want to have, like, it's just too much controversy to have kind of a line. So I think we felt like, we have this, that tool had created originally, um, never got approved by federal highways, but is something that their clients use. Feels like it's kind of in line with a lot of the thinking. And it can, you can get to a good design quicker without saying, well, this is what, you know, we designed something, but we're really not recommending it. We're just instantly going for variances in a lot of those edge spaces. Um, and I think even NACTO heard that, but I don't, I haven't seen what they're going to come out with. They just were asking people what they were seeing as kind of causing them difficulties with the guide that they have now. Um, I think that's kind of how we got at that, is that it feels better to have something that reflects what we realistically want to design, instead of always coming to the TC with, we want this variance, but here's what it would look like if we didn't ask for it, kind of feel in those areas. But I definitely know this is a tough one, um, in an area that's really developing, uh, right now with guidance.
I mean, I think it makes sense to not set a minimum staten- standard that you're expecting routinely to ask for variances on. I guess in terms of that question of, I mean, do you feel the rest of the guide, gives staff the confidence and the ability to put forward what they think is the best and appropriate facility, even if it seems to be above what the requirement is on, on the other graph? I just, I, I, I hope you hear what I'm saying in terms of the concern of, once you show this is sort of the, the minimum, having to then argue to do something that maybe staff agrees and the TC agrees would be, actually be more appropriate. And do you feel like you have that abilities with the, the guide as it is right now?
I mean, I think that we do. I mean, obviously, we've only talked over a few actual real projects. Um, but I feel like it, it does give us that. And I think that is something that after the first year, which should be, uh, you know, would be something we would really want to review, those projects for all of those six overlays, right? And have we had the outcomes that we intended to have by setting it up that way? And if not, why not? And what should we be changing? Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, Harold, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks again. I'll keep this short. I think, Chris, you summarized, um, what this discussion is about pretty neatly. And I think this has become more clear as we go on, that there's just a disagreement about which guide should be used as our starting point. And that's fine that there's disagreement about that. I just want to make one thing clear. I think one piece that we can turn the knob on is what the cross-section and the facilities are going to look like. So in Jennifer Street, yes, you could build a protected lane because the volumes are too high. But I also want to really emphasize that one thing that we should be looking at is changing speeds and changing volume. So if the volume is too high for Bike Boulevard, then that doesn't mean we need to put in, take out the trees and put in a protected bike lane. But we can think about like, well, do we put a diverter in? Do we put one of the many measures in the table that was shown later in there to get speeds down, that gets us into that zone where like, yeah, maybe even we're still a little bit above the threshold. But now it's really an all ages and abilities facility. And I think that's what it comes down to, to me. We, we're selling this as, this is a place where people of all ages and abilities can bike, and I think the NACTO guide does that pretty well. The other guide, I'm not sure about. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Um, Anne, you're up next. Go ahead, please.
Um, thanks. This is obviously still a developing area, and the guide is an excellent starting point in, in my mind, because there was confusion about which guide we're following. And, you know, we talked about that a lot tonight. I believe that this footnote reflects, uh, what TC asked to be put in there to help clarify that. And I think we should, you know, obviously, I'm not on the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, but it makes sense to me to try it for this next year and see how it works. And then once we get the revised NACTO guidelines, uh, that Renee is talking about, that hopefully will come, uh, then take a look at it again. And we have that ability on an annual basis, or I suppose in between, if there's something that really needs, um, you know, timely attention, so that we just have a great starting point. And, and I would encourage you to move forward with this, with this addition as discussed, um, to help provide this clarity. Thanks.
Thanks, Anne. All right. Additional questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, um, is there a motion? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Uh, I would move recommendation of approval, um, including the recommendations that were made by the Transportation Commission, uh, and the Board of Public Works, uh, which is also inclusive of the, the draft language that was shared with us tonight in response to the, uh, Transportation Commission recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Looks like Alder Furman. Is that your intent? Thank you. All right, Alder Foster, do you want to speak any further to your motion?
Um, well, I wanted to get that on the, the table, and then I actually wanted to go ahead and, and make a, a proposed amendment right now. I just wanted to keep it separate so we could be clear about it. So I wanted to move an amendment, um, to, uh, move the parking and the modal hierarchy underneath the auto, um, mode. So it would, it would still be on the modal hierarchy, but it would be shown underneath the, um, auto travel modes.
All right, thank you. There's a motion there. Is there a second? Second by Chris, thank you. Uh, do you want to speak further, Alder Foster?
Uh, yeah, just, I mean, I, I think in an ideal world, it just shouldn't really be on there at all. But I've, I've heard, um, especially from the folks on, on Transportation Commission, that are the ones that are really going to be, I think, leaning on this for those tough conversations about car parking versus bike lane sort of thing. So I, I, I appreciate the desire to have it be clearly sort of on the bottom. Um, but I think for a number of reasons, it makes more sense to have it be, um, under the, the travel ways that we're going to need for emergency vehicles or general, um, auto travel. So I think it makes more sense to have it, um, uh, on its own tier below those.
All right, any further, um, discussion on the amendment? Chris, go ahead, please.
Uh, just briefly, I, I do remember when we were, when it, parking was below uh, the others, and there was, it, it caused a discussion about like, well, how does parking relate to other sorts of uses of um, that potential space? And so I think I see why it was moved, um, up in line with, um, motorized traffic. Um, but I, I don't think it necessarily addresses, um, that, that discussion that came up at the time, um, and it raises more questions about how parking relates to motorized, the trafficways. So, um, I think, I think if there was enough consensus on, on this body, that, that would make sense to back down.
Anyone else comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll deal with the amendment first. On the amendment, um, to move parking in the modal hierarchy to, um, space below um, auto, auto forms of transit, transportation. All those in favor of the amendment, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair, please, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a notebook, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Um, then on the main motion to, uh, recommend adoption of resolution approving a complete streets, complete green streets policy to incorporate complete green streets principles of street design for all modes of transportation into the public way improvements and project phases, um, with the additions from TC and Board of Public Works. I'm sorry, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I actually wanted to, um, one more amendment for, before we took the, the final vote, sorry. Um, I did want to, um, move to, um, move, uh, biking and transit and put them on, um, on the same line on the modal hierarchy.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Chris. Um, go ahead, Alder Foster, if you want to speak further.
Thanks. Yeah, we've, we've kind of batted this around, uh, every time it was in front of us. Um, you know, I think Minneapolis, we saw is one, uh, example of a city that, that does this, where they put biking and transit on the, the same line. Um, I think it makes sense for a lot of, a lot of reasons. Um, biking is obviously a huge, um, focus of ours in, in Madison. And I don't, I don't think there's really any practical concern to either leave it the way it is or, or put them on the same path. Um, I know we've had some conversations about dealing with the, you know, if there is a conflict between, or, you know, lack of, perceived lack of space, like East Washington, for example, where, um, you know, we ended up prioritizing, um, bus travel lanes over bikeways, um, you know, I, I, I think those can and will be dealt with by the Transportation Commission, um, on those prod- projects. But overall, I think it's worth, um, having them shown as, as equal, um, as some of our peer cities have done.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Chris, go ahead, please.
Thanks. Um, so my understanding, I, I, I understand, I think, why the city was interested in putting transit above biking, um, especially with, you know, lots of transit investments that we're doing. Um, the way I've sort of interpreted it all along is that the overlays seem to take care of that. Um, so I guess I just wanted to ask staff if, if my read on that is right, or if there is something extra that separating them does, um, when you read the guide.
Sure. I mean, obviously, transit is on a much, there's much less streets impacted by transit. That, that transit priority network is much smaller. Um, we put, um, transit above biking because we really heard from our low-income, um, and, uh, people of color that they felt like transit needed to, um, be the second most important thing. And when we surveyed people, people generally felt they could live with it, um, or they supported that, um, move, knowing that it is a much more limited number of streets. I mean, we did have some comments that felt that, um, biking should be equal or above. Um, and then we had a lot of comments, um, probably the biggest group was about parking and where it was placed. Um, so we did leave it there, you know, just because we had heard that during the engagement, and it is a, a smaller number of streets. Um, whether it would really change things, there, you know, there might be those occasional situations, right? Where we would have some challenges, um, with both of those being equal. But, um, you know, that is a, probably a small percentage of overall project.
Thanks. Um, I guess, um, even though my personal preference would be to put them on the same line, I, I don't think I fully understand the, um, repercussions of that. And I think I would be, uh, not vote for this amendment at this time and see how it plays out at TC.
Thank you, Chris. Alder Paulson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I guess I'm planning on voting against this, so I would make a, um, I'm going to make a broad statement, which is that I think the transit is more important than biking. Uh, I just think that, uh, there are more people who rely on transit. And if we had to, if I ever, if I had to make a decision, uh, I'm going to choose mass transit over biking. I don't know how often I actually have to make that decision, but if I had to make a value statement, if I had to make a decision, that's where I would come down on. Um, the place where I get a little, uh, squishy on this is there's a difference, I think, between, uh, uh, transit safety and then transit convenience, right? I don't mind, if I have to make a decision, the answer is, well, bikes have to bike to uh, a block or two out of the way to get onto the Bike Boulevard to avoid a, a transit conflict. I don't feel bad about that. If it's a question of like, you know, do we, um, slow traffic down? Or do we slow mass transit down so we have extra space to have a protected bike lane to get across this, uh, really, really tricky bridge, then, then I think it's a no-brainer. So I don't know quite where that fits in, but, um, but I think broadly speaking, um, uh, if I have to make a decision, uh, I would choose, uh, uh, the, uh, mass transit. But I think that affects, uh, more people, uh, more consistently than, than biking does. So I'm going to vote against this.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Any further discussion? Okay, um, seeing none, uh, because we have several differences of opinion here, we will do a roll call vote um, on the amendment to move transit and biking to the same level on the modal hierarchy. All those in favor of making that change, that is, the yes vote is to put them both on the same level. Um, I, no, is to, is to keep things that they are. If the clerk, please call the vote.
Bodri Lankala? You're not with us anymore? Waltz Azar Day and Hannah Santa?
Hi.
Barbara Harrington McKinney?
I'm going to abstain.
Carly McAndrews?
Hi.
Christopher McHale? Christopher McHale?
Oh, uh, no.
Eric Paulson?
No.
Grant Foster?
Hi.
Keith Furman?
No.
Nikki Vander Mullen? She's not with us. Randy Udo?
No.
Thomas Wilson?
I would only vote in the event of, by, um, is Bodri's actually not with us?
Um, I don't, oh, yeah. Now I see his name there. Bodri?
I have four noes, three ayes, and one abstention. It appears that the noes have it. Okay, the noes have it, so that amendment fails. All right, any additional amendments? All right, seeing none, back to the main motion. On the motion to recommend adoption, uh, of a resolution approving a complete green streets policy to incorporate complete green streets principles of street design for all modes of transportation into the public way improvements and project phases, um, as amended, um, to move parking below, um, auto. And, um, with the additions made by, uh, to language made by Transportation Commission and Board of Public Works, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair, please, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no, border, and abstention, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will get on as unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you to staff. Um, it's good discussion.
Thanks, everyone. I know this has been a very long project. Does it really help? But a lot of great input, so thanks.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the effort that's gone into this over the last several years. All right, um, our next item then is Legistar seven five, uh, one eight five Director's Report.
Yeah, so I, uh, posted that today. I'm sorry, it's a little late. There's been many things going on. Uh, a, a quick note. On the Bus Rapid Transit, we had the groundbreaking on the fifteenth. Um, I think it turned out pretty well. It was a crap, you know, the weather was terrible, but we, there was a lot of people there. The governor showed up, um, and gave some comments, as well as the mayor and Secretary of Transportation. So it was a, it was a nice, um, ceremonial effort to kind of recognize the, um, amount of work that's gone in over the past several years. We were, on the very same day, on the very same day, we received two bidders for the BRT main package. Uh, the apparent low bidder was generally within our project budget, which we were very, uh, I've stated before, we. Uh the apparent low bidder was generally within our project budget, which we were very, uh I've stated before, we had concerns regarding. Uh so uh the bid award will be introduced to Board of Public Works on January fourth and to Common Council on January seventeenth. That's um. So that's, and we also received our letter of no prejudice, which allows us to move forward from the FTA. Our staff and consultant team continue to work on items uh necessary to enter a project agreement with the FTA. This includes resolving some issues with railroad crossings, the risk assessments and operating plans. Um but we are getting, you know, they have a checklist of about seventeen different items and we are moving through them. And then we're beginning to prepare a request for qualifications for the north-south BRT line and we hope to release that in early twenty twenty-three. Um we'd maybe hope to get that um done a little sooner, but um there's just been a lot of things going on. Uh I'm going to skip over Amtrak for a second and come back to it. Major initiatives uh that have been passed or are going through the Transportation Demand Management passed on December sixth, Common Council meeting. Uh that was a big deal. There is a, a fair amount of stakeholder involvement that um took a lot of our time. We had to interact with quite a few people. Uh the Complete Green Streets was you, you actually just uh passed. This is the last uh committee meeting. It goes before, before it goes before the Common Council. So that's, that's a big deal too. And then the Transit Oriented Design. Um an alternate proposal goes before the Common Council on January seventeenth. A parking, we are currently interviewing candidates for, for the Parking Manager and the PEO Supervisor um this week. The Development Agreement for the State Street Campus Mixed Use Development was approved by Common Council. And then the uh, the general development uh was approved by Plan Commission just last Monday. So uh we're moving forward on that. Federal funding, we're um continuing to monitor the FRA's Corridor Identification Program with an expected submittal due in early spring. And then uh we're working out the last details as mentioned for the construction agreement with the FTA. Uh the Wisconsin DOT projects, um I don't know how many people were on the board when we discussed the county AB interchange, but um it's been under construction and it's due to be opened in October of twenty twenty-three. And any of you who've had to try and take a left out of the Harrah Hills Golf Course will appreciate having a, an easier way of, of getting out of there. Um the I thirty-nine ninety, ninety-four project, um the Wisconsin DOT is um I'm going to say moving quite rapidly on that. They're starting to develop alternatives. They're looking for city input on, on two possible interchange options, one's at Hepka Road and one's at an extension of Milwaukee Street. Uh I'll give you more updates. There's some meetings in January and I'll let you know about those. The Stone Road Projects, the North Stone Road Project um is moving uh more rapidly than the South Stone Road Project. Uh they are beginning to develop alternatives, but they have not actually put any lines to paper yet. So while it's moving fast, I don't believe it's um I don't believe it's moving at quite as quickly as the interstate prod, project. Um this is kind of, I'm just going to say it's kind of a unique time in that you, we have like three different major Wisconsin DOT projects within the Madison, you know, municipal boundary. It's a, it's a interesting time. Um Amtrak, we had two meetings to kick off the Amtrak Station Location Study. The in-person meeting from had from a hundred to a hundred and fifty attendees. The virtual meeting had translation services and had over three hundred attendees. Uh because of the much greater than expected attendance coupled with staffing challenges, we just didn't have enough IT staff to handle everything. We weren't able to um offer a question and answer session for the virtual session. We did have one for the in-person session. Uh we'll be prepared for future meetings. Um in Legisstar, the criteria for station location is attached as well as the fact sheet. Uh I'll go over that in just a second. Note that the determining a station location is just one small step in the overall process. I mean, you know, Amtrak would have to understand and program improvements for track improvements all the way from here to, you know, Milwaukee. And partnerships with other entities will be necessary. When we um look at the criteria that we showed at the um at the public involvement meeting, uh you know, Amtrak has uh a station planning and development guide that um is downloadable. It ha, it's pretty um pretty detailed. And the mayor, when she opened up the meeting, she said that basically, you know, we will have our preferences and our feasibility, but Amtrak has a a pretty large say in the process. I'm going to just sh, show you the table of contents of what that guide looks like. Um hold on for a second. Um I have this beat up correctly. Yeah, hold on. So that, you know, this is their guide. Um it's not small, right? And these are different things. These are different things that they look at, the platform length, uh act, you know, accessibility, those types of things. Um the type of a station it would be, category one through five um programming elements. So it's um, it's, it's really, I'm, I'm just going to be quite honest, it's kind of a world. You know, everyone in the paper right now has a preferred location, right? And you, every other day you read what preferred location there is in the letters to the editor, and we've received many emails. Um but the, the bottom line is, is that um it may be difficult to find feasible or practical alternatives in the, in the locations that we are looking at. And so that's where our consultants will have to come in. Um we are interacting directly with Amtrak staff and they've already told us about challenges that they see with some of the some of the locations. Um going back to the um, to the slideshow. You know, these are some of the general characteristics, um interior passage or waiting area, seven hundred foot platform, tangent track, maximum degree of curvature for track. Overhead, you know, potential for overhead pedestrian bridge, uh passenger drop-off and pickup areas, long and short-term parking, intercity bus and local transit connections. Train layover space. In fact, we had a meeting where, you know, they talked about that for an hour. I just thought, really? But, you know, and yet it was a detail that was very important to some of the Amtrak officials. Um for us as a city, uh a huge issue would be the ability to secure a site. You know, um I think we'd be un, unlikely to want to pursue eminent domain. And so we'd have to find a way to secure a site that's feasible and attractive and accomplishes objectives um as well as some of the other considerations, right? This is a, um the five general locations that were presented at the public involvement meeting. Um they, each color represents an area long enough that the consultants feel like they can find some space within that. You know, whether it's the red one or the green one and the yellow one, some space that would have some feasibility and we could evaluate. And then um this here is kind of a um a summary of some of the criteria that consultants are using for the initial screening. So um right now, um the consultants are working, I'm going to say, you know, Philip right now is taking some of the time off to be with his families and he's the, you know, the staff project manager of it. When he gets back, we'll uh start moving into um the engagement process that we'll use from the city, because this is a relatively small contract, most of the engagement will have to be from a city staff, because um it's not in the consultant contract. Um we have to develop a language access pro, plan um and, and our T engagement strategy, those types of things. So that's kind of a, kind of a um a summary. It's actually, it's a, it's a great summary of all the things that are going on. And then it's kind of a glimpse of the next things that are going to be happening, right? So.
Thank you, Tom. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Tom, on the Amtrak, um what's the kind of rough timeline that we're looking at for that um project? And when do you maybe anticipate would be a good next update at the Policy and Planning Board?
Um um preliminary timetable is that we, some of the evaluation would be done in February, right? And then um um maybe a recommendation or a, a preferred site might be late April or May. Um however, this is Madison, right? And so things take sometimes a little bit longer than, than others. Um the core, the FRA's corridor identification. Funding opportunity for planning monies, they'll probably announce that in May. So if we were near a decision, then it would coincide well with, let's say, planning monies that might be available to go farther in the effort. And so that's I think that will, that would be a, a, a great way, you know, there would be synergy between federal monies and where we're at in our location process, but
So maybe sometime in February could get an update on some of the kind of initial screening. Okay, sounds good. And maybe at that time, we could also just um um hear a little bit about the sort of engagement plan as well. I hear you saying that it's, you know, we don't have a lot of extra resources to do that. And yet it's a I think it's, it, it is clearly a very high interest um item for the general public and I expect it probably will continue to, to be so. So just want to think ahead about that. And if there's anything that the board can do to support or recommend support, so that we're able to, to get good public engagement on it would be great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, any further questions for Tom? Um this discussion about this report. All right, seeing none. Our next item is Legisstar seven five one eight six, um Transportation Policy and Planning Board Structure Discussion. I think we'd intended for this one to be actually at our next meeting, but because it's on the agenda, um I'd look for, I'll, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd move referral of this to our next meeting.
Thank you. Second by Alder Furman, it looks like. All right, um any discussion? Seeing none, um on the motion to refer this item to our next meeting, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair, please, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a notebook, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I've got it as unanimous. Thank you. Um last item is uh Legisstar seven five one four three. Just a reminder to all members, if you haven't already done so, uh please fill out the statement of interest form. Um I think it's been emailed to us at least twice now. So um if you don't, if you can't find it, you reach up to me or, or Tom or um someone else and and get that. But it, it should have been emailed to you at least, at least twice. The date is on January third, so running out of time. Um any questions on that? Anyone not been able to do that or not, not found it? All right, seeing none. That's all I have for the evening. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Chris. Second. Second Alder Foster, I'm sorry, Alder Furman. Didn't read the full name. Um all right, all those in favor of returning the meeting for this evening, please unmute your name and mute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Have a good night, everyone.